Good evening and welcome to the Salary Commission meeting of May 18th. Can you do a roll call, please? Oh, me? Okay. So Fernando?
Here.
Okay. Offman?
Here.
Kara?
Here.
And Chandra?
Here.
I believe that's Quorum for the night, okay. So we are here tonight to discuss the Salary Commission and our findings and where we want to go from here. Who would like to start? Fernando?
Do we want to start with public comment if there's anybody in the audience that has public comment?
Yes, thank you. Does anyone have a public comment who'd like to speak this evening?
And then I think we should just do what we've maybe considered doing before if we had people come in, which is to just limit it to a certain amount of time.
Can you talk more directly?
Sure, yeah. And maybe just limit it to a certain amount of time, either one or two minutes or something, and go from there.
Okay.
Also, the introductions.
Oh, also can staff introduce themselves, please?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Bob Sterbank. I'm a lawyer and of counsel with the firm of Foster Garvey, and along with my partner, Steve DeGiulio, we have been asked to serve as special counsel to the city, working through the mayor's office and with Ms. Laird.
More directly.
I'm sorry. Special counsel to the city, working through the mayor's office and Ms. Laird with respect to Salary Commission issues.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Catherine Laird. I am the Human Resources Director.
And I'm Mary Grady. I'm with the Human Resources Department and supporting staff.
All right. All right, so we've gotten a lot of public comment. And does anyone? We just have gotten it and we've, we'll read it. Do you want to speak?
Yeah, I mean, we've just gotten it today at the beginning of the meeting about 10 minutes ago, so maybe we should start with anybody here who'd like to give public comment today, just in case those folks have, you know, schedules that they'd like to attend to, and then we could talk about the paper comment received, because maybe we'll need a few minutes to also review that. That's just my proposal. Any seconds for that proposal?
Does anyone? I already asked, does anyone want to speak this evening?
I think we have one over there.
Okay.
Anybody?
No one over here. Yes, ma'am? Would you get up and announce who you are?
Madam Chair, if I may, because this is a special meeting, as I think the Commission members are aware, notice was required to be published 24 hours in advance, and you can only take final disposition on matters that are on the agenda, and of course, it's the Commission's decision to decide how to proceed, but public comment is not part of the agenda this evening.
Well, it's been every meeting that we had, so we're... Okay. Well, since you showed up, I think you should speak.
Nothing in this sec... If I can do a brief? Yeah, would it be okay for me to do one thing, just to respond to that briefly?
Yes.
Maybe ask for this attorney's advice. Under RCW 423240.3, I believe, in public comment, it says, "Nothing in this section prevents a governing body from allowing public comment on items not on the meeting agenda." Is that, does that sound accurate to you?
It does say that.
I just want to make sure I'm, you know, if we're allowed to do public comment, if you're telling us we're not legally allowed to do that, I'd like more clarification from you.
I think from the city's perspective, the Commission would take some risk as to whatever decisions it might make by changing the agenda. I acknowledge the section that Commissioner Corey has just referenced. It does speak to public comment at regular meetings.
Yeah.
At which final action is taken, and this is not a regular meeting, so that, and we should all be aware, that section too was passed last year, so there aren't any decisions interpreting. It's not a model of clarity with respect to which kinds of meetings it's talking about.
Okay, so I'd like to comment that on the agenda, there's nothing. So...
And if I may ask a follow-up?
You don't, just, yes, go ahead.
Are you saying that only stuff germane to the agenda can be asked? Is that, is that what you're saying? Maybe I'm misunderstanding you, or just no public comment can be had at any meeting?
It's not that no public comment can be had at any meeting.
Any special meeting, apologies, yeah.
It's that notice is required to include the items that are on the agenda for a special meeting.
Got it, and so...
Those need to be noticed 24 hours.
Sure, to follow up with you, to follow up with you, since I think you're representing the city, in your opinion right now, has the city done its job in providing public notice to the public, when we've given them time and asked them to provide notice, and then they've also emailed us telling us that they have provided notice to the public? Do you, is it your impression that that has been carried out as to this time?
The agenda, to my understanding, indicates the language for the agenda that was requested in the Commission's call for meeting. I don't have that in front of me, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, I believe this is a fairly loose agenda, that's true, but are you telling us it's been communicated to the public or not? That's the city's, that's the city's job, so has it been done or not?
I'll look to Ms. Laird or Ms. Grady in terms of, you're asking whether it was published on the website and...
Whatever the requirement...
Can you all speak more directly into...
Yeah, sorry about that. Whatever, whatever the requirements are under the OPMA, in terms of notice for special meetings, has that, have those requirements been met by the city at this point?
Yes, they have been met.
Okay, thank you. And so as a follow-up question for the city's representation, is it your understanding, when those notice requirements are met, is a meeting able to take public comment, a special meeting that we are currently engaged in, able to take public comment on items on the agenda?
It would depend whether the special meeting agenda included public comment, and that was the, the point I was trying to make, is that this, this agenda does not, and so there's some risk as to the action the Commission might take. And with that said, of course, it's the Commission's decision how to proceed, not the lawyers.
So to be clear, you're telling the Commission there's a risk for us to have public comment to them at this meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
So your comment is that we not have public comment, correct?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
I said, you're recommending that we not have public comment this evening.
I was just pointing out what, what the risks are, the decision is for the Commission to make.
To be clear, you don't represent the Commission.
Correct, I do know.
You're not, you're not advising us. You're advising the city. You're not our attorney.
But that's correct.
You are graciously potentially giving us some, some notice about public comment on the agenda, which I think we appreciate, and maybe we should not have public comments, since it sounds like the city's position is that it would be illegal potentially for us to have public comment at a meeting that apparently notice has been given. So we're clear about that? Is there anything that I'm missing? A city attorney representing the city is telling us that it may be legal for us to have public comment at a public meeting.
Under these circumstances with this agenda?
No, no, I appreciate that. I mean, I just want to make sure I understand, because there are people here who've clearly come to give public comment, and I just want to apologize, and I know that's the case.
And I just wanted the statement to be clear.
I get it. I'm being mean to you, and I'm sorry about that.
No, you're not.
But I, you know, I just, I want to respect the public too, and it's their time, and for any members in the audience, then, in my perspective, I'm sorry, like, it seems like you probably took time out of your day to give public comment, and I appreciate that. The easiest way, I think, is going to be to email salarycommission@redmond.gov. My apologies for this.
Well, I, we have one person, so I believe that you can get up and speak if you want to.
I don't...
What?
I would not rec, I personally, Madam Chair, I would not recommend us doing that if the city is essentially saying that may be illegal.
Oh.
If that's what they're saying, I would, I would like us to, I would personally feel uncomfortable with that if we're being advised that that might be illegal.
Okay.
Seems ludicrous to me, but I, I mean, I don't know the OPMA law, so...
Okay.
I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. I get it.
Thanks for telling us. We appreciate, appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you very much. So, does Catherine, do you have anything to say or offer?
I do not. It does look like, oops. It doesn't want to stay on. It does look like somebody has their hand up.
Who's that? Well, if we're not allowing testimony from here, then we're not allowing testimony from people who've, who've called in. What?
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm very sorry that we, we have been, yes, we've been, it's been recommended by the city that we not have any public comment this evening, so we will not have any, one way or the other. So there we go. Okay.
And of course, Madam Chair, I don't know what the, the course of the events will be, but if the Commission proceeds to have a regular meeting in the future on this topic, that, you know, the statute that Commissioner Corey pointed to would allow public comment, whether, you're not bound by a published agenda in advance, you can add change for a regular meeting, and so there would be additional opportunities if the Commission wanted to put this over, put it in the future, have a regular meeting, you could take public comment at those times.
Right, so...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Matt Cantor, Salary Commission member, is online.
Hello, this is Matt Cantor. I'm a Commissioner, not a public comment.
He's making a...
He's joined.
It's Matt Cantor. He's joined via Teams.
Hi, Matt. Welcome.
Hi, there's, there's no Teams link in any of our emails. I couldn't find it. I wasn't able to join. This is the only way I was able to join. I couldn't find the Teams link.
It's because there was no Teams link that I saw. Sorry, Matt.
Yep.
Can we, can Matt be officially...
Is this still a hybrid meeting? Am I allowed to participate, or because I'm in the public comment, even though I'm a Commissioner, am I not allowed to participate?
Maybe we should ask the city's attorney.
You're allowed to participate.
Can we have our Commissioner join us?
If I'm understanding right from the audio, Commissioner Cantor is joining via the link and participating as a Commission member in, in the meeting. Yes.
Great.
I'm joined via the phone, because there is no link.
That's right. Okay.
With that clarification, thank you.
Thank you, Matt, for your persistence. So who would like to start? Okay.
I'll go for it. I'll reiterate something that I think I brought up in a previous meeting, which is that I think we should consider a salary adjustment to the council, so that each council member is paid, the, the number that we discussed before proportionately to 40 times, excuse me, 2080, which is the number of average hours in a position per year, multiplied by living wage under the MIT's Living Wage Calculator of single adults with two children. I'm happy to provide those specific numbers if you want to discuss, but the number at the, kind of bottom line number is $9,600, excuse me, $9,607.95 per month, when it's taken to a per-month basis and not like a weekly basis, or annualized at $115,295.40. If I, my math is wrong, feel free to correct me, but that's just the 50...
Fernando?
Go ahead.
It's really hard to hear.
Oh, it's, sorry, it's about the mask and this, I apologize. Let's go back. I'll say the number one more time without all the prequels. So it's $55.43 multiplied by 2,080, which equates to $115,295.40 annually. And to give context for that, that's what I think a substantial amount of public comment has also been on board with, has been a living wage. I can reference some of these public comments here. There's definitely been disagreement in the public comment, but we have at least one, two, three, four, five individual public comments that I was just given by Director Laird today, and we also have received other public comment from organizations, including the 48th LD, providing a resolution to us that presumably was voted on by the full membership, which, you know, you can take that how you will in terms of representation or the number of people that's represented by that. So those are the public comments that I've seen in support of this sort of thing. Obviously, it's up to your interpretation, but that's what I'm, you'd like to put on the discussion today, so.
I will say the 45th didn't weigh in, because I'm the Chair of the 45th, and I thought that would be a conflict, so I did not have them address this.
I'll second Fernando's motion.
You're doing what?
I'm going to second Fernando's motion.
Well, I want, does, does anyone else have any motions that they want to put forward of what they want to see for Salary Commission?
Is, is, do we want to have a discussion?
I think we can also open it up to discussion now that it's, now that it's been proposed. I think we can go into discussion and...
I think let's have a discussion.
Okay, so it comes out to how much a month?
Per month, it would be $9,607.95.
But that's, that's not taking that this would be less than a full-time position, right?
I'm not sure how to answer that. That, that's the amount that would, it would be $9,607 about, and if you wanted to do the math on the living wage MIT calculator stuff, that would be 5,543 for the single parent with two children, is the reference that the MIT calculator gives, and then that's multiplied by 2,080, which is, you know, approximate for a position that would be working that many hours each year. So obviously, with exempt positions, there can be flexibility there, depending on how much people work. Sometimes it's significantly more, or sometimes it's less. Not to say that council is, or isn't exempt, I don't know what the, the details of that law is.
What I did was divide it in half, and that would be 2,500. For half-time, it would be 10,000. All right, so does anyone else have a comment on this? Offman? Okay.
Yeah, to be clear, among the Commissioners, I just want to like clarify that, you know, we're not discussing the classification of the role of council member between, you know, full-time, part-time. That is not our purview. We're merely discussing the compensation, that, that we should compensate the council, you know, commensurate to the, the role itself and the work that they're doing.
Okay, all right. Kara, do you have, do you have anything to say?
Sure. I love the idea of paying people a living wage. At the same time, I'm a little concerned that this is a little too high, like, looking at my own salary, this is substantially more than I earn for a full-time position, and so I'm concerned that we may be going a little too high with 115, though I would like to continue thinking about a living wage for people.
Yes, okay. Chandra?
Can I make a comment?
Matt, yes, Matt, make a comment.
Um, you know, about a month ago, I really, you know, we, we've all heard Fernando's proposal at this point several times. I was leaning towards a smaller but still high number, but I'm just going to be honest here, I think a dollar amount like this will encourage a more active city council, and I think that level of support is going to be needed based on like our experience as Commissioners with meetings being canceled. So I, it's, the, our experience over the past month has really convinced me that this is what we need to do to have like a truly productive city.
Okay.
Again, thank you, everybody, for working very hard on this one. I know that it's not been easy, even though it's just...
Speaking to your microphone.
Even though it is just a couple of weeks that we have kind of met, this has been in quite a ride, not to say the least. Let's look at those numbers. What Fernando is talking about makes a lot of sense, primarily because there is enough evidence that, you know, we are living in a place which is extremely expensive, and we understand that, you know, this is going to be the case where if you want to have quality of work, we always crave for, and we live in an area where, you know, we really, really require people who have high quality to come and work with us, including our own city council, who want to give their best. The primary consideration is to be able to ensure that, you know, these people work without having to go work other jobs or many other things to meet, ends meet, which is primarily is what happened, what's happening around, and I know, I think, you know, even, even though whether we are looking at it or not, we still have roughly about 10,000 people in the local area still under poverty levels. We understand that. But having said that too, right now, we want everybody to be encouraged to come and join the city council. That means that, no, they should be attracted to the city council in so many different ways. It's just not the people who are rich, but also people who have that interest, that ability, that concern for their own cities, they should come and work. Having said that, I think, you know, there are other, many cities which are working on similar models, now that we have taken the courage to go and establish ourselves as somebody who we can think that, you know, we can really work with and work for the people. This model definitely looks to be one of those models that we can certainly consider, and I think kudos to Fernando for putting so much research and effort into this. I think I definitely do support that model. Thank you.
Okay. So I think the amount is a little high for us, and I would rather divide that amount by two. Because I look at these, I know that it says they're quarter-time position, but they're really half-time positions. I called a good...
Point of, can I ask you just a quick point, information?
Yes.
So a propos, a motion is on the table, so are you asking for an amendment to the motion, or are you just making a, having a question?
I'm just...
Commenting.
Offering it, my comment is all. So...
I think, I think we're still in discussion, right?
Yeah, we're going to have a discussion.
If we want to make an amendment later, we can do it, but yeah, just discussion.
I'm just telling you where I am. I also will tell you that I called a friend of mine who was the mayor of Kirkland and on city council there for a number of years, to talk to him, and he was gung-ho for us to go for it tonight, because of how many hours he put in, and he said, you know, with being close to city, to the city, and meeting with people in the city, plus all his other responsibilities, it was, it was a lot. So, but I think we should consider this a half-time position. And, yes, Fernando?
Oh, only if you're done.
What?
Only if you're finished, sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think you can think about it in different ways, and I don't think I'm really thinking about those hours all the time. I think, you know, if you want to think about it like that, in terms of compensating it appropriately with what, you know, any of those sorts of metrics too, you could also look at, for example, the, the mayor's new salary is a good example of what we could equate the, you know, the, not necessarily the responsibility in time with, but definitely with the equal parts of government kind of looking over who writes laws and who implements them, and those folks having similar, you know, co-overlapping responsibilities. And so if we look at the mayor's salary that was approved recently by council, I think it's about, please correct me if I'm wrong here, I think it's about 160 or potentially a little more, if you include the, the other benefits around just, just healthcare benefits, and then if you also include the car stipend that I believe may be approved, those, those things may have escaped me in their exact value, but I think it gets up to probably about 170. My, my math is a little, a little flimsy here, but if, if you look at that and you think about Karen, the model that you're, you're kind of envisioning, let's say you're kind of thinking, okay, maybe council, because there's seven of them, the responsibility, you know, slightly diminished, but they all have to write their own legislation and do stuff, you could multiply that, that mayoral salary times like .6, .7, and still end up at the same place that I'm at. So I just encourage you to think about it that way as well, but yeah.
I recognize that they, they work a lot of hours because they have regional committees as well as city committees that they sit on and have to be prepared when they attend those, and they also get training, because they can go to seminars and stuff when they're doing this, so...
I agree on that one. So there's a lot of work that goes behind the curtains, when I say that thing, literally, but recognizing that work is an important aspect of the Commission, ensuring that, you know, we provide that basis for what we have done and what they are doing for us, and we also recognize that, you know, there are about eight elected members here in the entire city, including the mayor plus the seven city council members, actually having to work on that and ensuring that, you know, these people are recognized as people representatives of equal order, and then their contribution is an absolutely important thing. And again, I know the numbers are definitely the thing that we can look at quickly and work on that, but the most important thing is to recognize their hard work importance, and again, it's not just in the number of hours that they do, but the quality of work that they do for the city. This is a billion-dollar city. Don't expect like, you know, let's be like, you know, this is not a cheap, cheap thing. It's not, it's not the question of cheap, cheap thing. We are competing against something which is hard decisions that need to be made here. So let's actually go ahead and honor that decision structure to be made properly. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to, you know, ask maybe the folks who are hesitant on this, like, if, if they have more questions or concerns they'd like to deliberate, because ideally, I'd like us to come to a consensus on this, whatever number we do decide.
Oh, I agree.
And, yeah, if, I don't know, to not put those people on the spot, but to ask them if there's anything they'd like us to discuss further, but yeah.
Okay. Kara, do you, yes, please, feel free.
Okay, I'm not sure if I have any specific questions off the top of my head, but I think what I do keep coming back to is knowing what a lot of people in the city get paid, and knowing that I know people who work a full-time job, and this would be more than double what they earn in a year. And so being concerned about being fair to everyone, and while I want a living wage, I also want to make sure that people don't feel like I work 40 hours a week and other people work part-time and are getting paid substantially more than I am, and feel like the world is set against them, the people in power are the ones who have all the money.
I have my hand raised for a comment.
Yes, Matt. I can't see that, because you're not down here.
Yeah, I apologize. I, you know, again, I was of much of the same thought earlier. I felt that, like, again, I make $5,000 a month, and I, I didn't feel comfortable, like, I felt comfortable with the city employee, with the mayor, with the city council making more than me, but I was thinking maybe 6,500 or 3,500. But at this point, I do feel that we need to be, like, to what Fernando said, we need to be treating the city council as the same class of employee as the mayor, right? They're not the executive of the city, and so that's why they're paid less, but they're the same class. And if, if we are approving a budget where the mayor is being paid this much, I feel that, you know, as elected officials, they have more exposure, there's more potential for need, and like, you know, the floor I originally wanted to set was making sure they can afford at least one month of housing, in the case of a catastrophic event. I believe that this city council and any city council in the future can take this number and use it as an opportunity to be more responsible. I believe that this is about for equity, and like, you know, I had the same, same fear as someone who makes less than this, and a lot, and, you know, and speaking to folks I know, you know, that fear was expressed as well, but I really think that we need to honor talent in the city right now, and I think that is something that supporting Fernando's motion will do.
Okay. Now I want, got the call, Mary. Mary.
I got a text message from Rosemary. I also said that you thought she could call in tonight, and she didn't get in. I think she's on the, I see her number.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Yes, Fernando?
Just the...
Oh, sorry.
Outside of it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Nothing about it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So, one thing I wanted to kind of bring up in that regard to also respond to some of the stuff that's come up too, is that in the council member surveys that were sent out, I think we did hear, you know, a significant amount of kind of echoing of what Matt has just described, and I think also what we've experienced in the kind of ongoing nature of the commission. I'm, you know, I could quote it here, but if you look at council member Anderson's, toward the end of council member Anderson's statements, just the strain that it sounds like this position puts on someone, not just mentally, but also potentially legal risk and other things there as well. And, you know, for me, it's, it's, it's mainly wanting to know that, you know, someone from a background without as much support or as much, you know, independent wealth or as much kind of generational experience to the sort of, you know, government cliques that might exist, that if that person gets into office, they're going to be able to represent effectively their community. And I think we're not creating a government that does that effectively unless we're at least looking, and, and again, we're not looking at paying an exorbitant salary, in my opinion, this is the basic living wage for this area for a, a single parent of two children. So, I mean, it's, it's tough, like, it's, it's, and honestly, I felt like this was, you know, somewhat of a compromise to try and just think about like who we want in office, like, I would like to see a single parent be able to represent the interests of children for their community and, you know, put their voice out there and continue to, to push for that, just personally, I'd like that to be an option. And then when you also look at kind of the, the larger picture of, you know, who do we want in government, and how do we get a government that will actually represent the interests of, you know, my, my proposal here is because I'd like to represent the interest of working class people in government, and I think that's very difficult to do if you, if you don't pay them enough to survive in, you know, the role that they might try and get elected into, so, yeah, those are, those are my kind of additional thoughts, and, yeah.
Okay. I also got a call today from somebody that's involved in public, has been involved in public service, who said something about that this job is, you know, public service and being able to do that. But I also think about the people who are not making much even the living wage wherever they are doing now, being able to carve out the time to be on city council. And I would like to encourage people who are everyday, regular people to run for city council and offer their voices to us. So, that's where I am. Kshandra?
Yeah, so Chair, I think that's a great way of looking at it. Bringing in more people into the democratic process is a great way of really, you know, how we, the local self-government works. I certainly support the voice that you have, but again, you know, having to say that, no, just serve, not feed the kids, just serve, not have a good life, just serve, and then suffer, that model should really be taken out, right? We are a large city, we are going to go to a larger city, we are going to have, you know, this is like a global city, if you can call it as a global city, Redmond is heard across the globe. Let's be honest about it, that now we don't want to say that, no, we don't have the guts to go back and tell that, no, our own city council does not get the very basic things that they really deserve in this global city that is there. We cannot do that thing, and for that, I think, you know, this is the time where we step up. I know that the proposals are great, but I'm pretty sure that now we can actually have this robust discussion before we go back and vote on those things, but great comments. Chair, you have done a fantastic job bringing those things together, appreciate that one.
Kara? Yes, Hoffman?
Yeah, so, the bottom line is that seven of the eight, you know, elected positions in our representative democracy are essentially paywalled. Consider, you know, the single parents, the chronically ill, the disabled, people that could bring a diverse perspective to the council that, you know, are blocked because of the current circumstances. That, that's just something that I think, you know, we want to keep in mind, and whatever decision we end up coming to, it needs to be, you know, something that allows someone to live in this very high cost of living area and serve and, and represent the people. So, yeah, that's, that's my comment on that.
Okay. Kara, do you have?
Sure, and I think that we all agree that we want people to be able to come of all backgrounds. I think the debate is just about what is the appropriate amount, whether it's half that, whether it's the full amount you're coming up with, whether we say that there were a number of people who were working about three-quarters time when we asked for surveys and say three-quarters of that. I think that's kind of part of what we're doing right now, is trying to figure out what is appropriate and thinking through, like, this is a high cost of living city, let's fully admit that, and what is reasonable, and I think based on the surveys, we've seen that this is not actually a quarter-time position, but should we pay them full-time, or should this be something where it's like, yes, this will definitely pay for these hours, but you will need something else? Or, I mean, to be fair, a lot of people do survive in the city on less than even half this, so what is the best way to do this? And I think that's probably the debate.
Well, I agree with you, we shouldn't pay it like it's a full-time position, because it is not a full-time position.
So, one of, one of the things that I think about too is that, you know, if I were making what I'm making now, and I don't make this, like, I'm on the city council, if I were making what I'm making now, and that was my city council salary and I had no other income, I don't think I could afford to run for reelection. And while I don't think that we need to consider the cost of participating in an election, like, yada, 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 but if we go for a lower amount, that means that these city council members may not have the ability to think about their careers as council members or, or what else they may want to do long-term, right? And we also have to think about that retention issue. If you think about all that goes into getting these roles as city council members, you get this role, and then like, it's hard to hold any other job, so you're relying on this income. And then your term's up, a, and you essentially have to like, schedule around a really busy job to maintain this, and there's no wage progression. And while I understand this is public service and it shouldn't necessarily be that way, I, I want to invest in where the work is being done, and I'm really proud of the work that city council members have done over the years and will continue to do, and I feel that now is a time where we can afford this experiment, we can see how it impacts council productivity, and if it doesn't work, another salary commission can change this. And I think it's, it's worth a shot. Hello?
Yeah, I think we're all just thinking, sorry, Matt, I don't know if there's a video feed there so you could see us or not, but.
I, I can't see, there was no team link, I, I'm only on the phone.
Time is 2:54. Okay. I beg your pardon. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I wanted to interpose a procedural consideration for the commission. I don't want in any way to interfere with a robust policy discussion, which is valuable. It's not clear whether, to me, whether the commission was contemplating taking final action on a particular proposal, and if you were, the city's position is that you would be placing yourself and the decision at risk because the particular decision, final action on a decision and what it might be is not on the agenda, and that's-
No one asked me what was going to be on the agenda, so-
So, you know, as, I think as I mentioned before, the, my understanding is staff responded and posted the agenda that was called in the, the call for special meeting. The consideration is that there are a number of appellate cases that say the purpose of notice statutes is to apprise an interested person of the specifics of an action so they can prepare and participate. And in those cases where the agenda said, we're going to consider an ordinance or an ordinance in this area, or this plan, but without the specifics, the courts have later said that the notices were invalid. And so I just, again, wasn't clear even to me reading this or from the, the conversation so far whether the commission was headed towards a, a vote on final action, so I just wanted to put that consideration out there for, for you.
So, would it be-
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
So, as someone who's reading all the emails regardless of what was put in the agenda, I believe people, whether or not we were going to vote, we wanted the option, like, that, that was something that the emails were being sent, reflect that we wanted the option to vote on this today. If that was our intent, whether or not we chose to use it or not, you know, I think we all wanted to see what consensus was, and staff didn't put that in there, would that affect the outcome? Because that's not what the commission wanted, but that's what was done.
Does council want to respond to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't know if that, that question was directed to me or not.
I, I think it was. Matt, was that at council or was that at someone else?
Yep.
That was directed at the, that was directed at the city attorney. I mean, we had been, you know, expressing that at least that we wanted to take a vote. I mean, we were all on the same page that we wanted to vote before filing, and all of our contacts prior towards, you know, meetings getting canceled, where that we'd be voting on May 4th. When we, when there was attempts to schedule this meeting, while there was no guarantee that we wanted to take the vote, I think we wanted the option, and I think that was fairly clearly communicated to staff, even if staff didn't put that on the agenda. So, I mean, because staff chose not to put that on agenda, isn't there additional legal risk if we don't get to vote?
So, the, the consideration, I believe, is what is on the agenda and whether it is specific enough about the action that might be taken to qualify as providing sufficient notice of a proposed final, final disposition, and-
If I can add-
So that would be both a potential vote to approve, and approve what?
Well, we have on the agenda, it says, discuss proposals and consider making a decision. We can consider that, yes, we do want to.
Is it, is it really council's position that the, the language of, quote, "consider making a decision" implies that the commission did not mean to actually make a decision, but we just meant to think about it? Is that, is that really the city's, the city council's position? I, I just like clarification, because that's the quote on the paper that the city has printed for us.
It is the quote on the paper, and the question that a reviewing court would ask is, consider making a decision on what? An increase?
On the proposal.
A decrease?
Very well.
An increase how much?
All right.
A decrease how much? The notice does not say.
In that, in that case, can I-
I'm sorry, Commission Member, I'm not quite finished.
You're also, you're also not entitled to speak at this meeting, to be clear, so if I have a follow-
I believe, I'm directing my comments to the chair.
I did ask him, okay.
Very well, sorry.
So let him finish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, the considerations are, is the agenda specific about what a decision would be on? What proposal? And enough to-
What were the salary commission, what would you think it would be about?
So the salary, it's not a question to me, it's a question of what would a reasonable person think reading this is the test a court would apply. The salary commission has authority both to recommend increases and decreases in salary. Moreover, there's no discussion on this agenda, again, which came from the email, from the members, that this is what the agenda should be. There's no discussion here for certain that-
Right, point of order, Madam Chair, I think I understand the context that the, that the city's representation is trying to make. Can I ask a few follow-up questions, is that all right?
I can't repeat that.
Oh, would it be okay if I asked the attorney some follow-up questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Please do.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could just finish, the other-
I think the chair has just said that I can ask you some follow-ups.
I'm sorry, the mayor is not, not here.
Yeah, the chair of this commission, which is a public agency, has just given me permission to ask you some follow-ups, so I appreciate it. Just a few other clarifications.
I hear your point, Counselor, and understand what you are saying, but I don't understand why, reading, "The Redmond Salary Commission Members Have Prepared the Agenda As Follows: Discuss Proposals and Consider Making a Decision."
No, I, I actually, I understand what council is saying, that's, and I appreciate it. It's, it's actually very good information for us to have, and I'm sorry if I'm coming off as rude for interrupting you. I think I wanted some follow-ups on a few other specific facts that I don't know if you're aware of or not. When we attempted to call this meeting multiple times, at least as far as I'm aware of, when I attempted to call it through the OPMA statutes to give notice to city and the staff, we had multiple times provided that information. It sounds like staff had decided to selectively include only the points that, that were made in the most recent suggestion. Next time, if we have to have a next time, what would your suggestion be? Should we, should we seek private counsel to write the agenda for, for the city, or would you be available to write the agenda with us so we're actually able to make a decision? I think I'm mostly just curious how volunteer commissioners are supposed to dive into the minutia and, and like, figure out what we'd like to do, because I, it makes me uncomfortable now to actually make a decision today, given what you're saying, but you also have to see a degree of absurdity here as to, you know, the situation, so do you have any suggestions for us?
Excuse me, Mr. Sterbank is the city's council, he is not your council, and so you can-
I'm asking, you're right, you've brought him to this, you have not been recognized.
And you may-
You have not been recognized.
And you may have your-
Director Laird, you have not been recognized.
They have your-
Madam Chair, Director Laird has not been recognized, and I'm asking a question of city's council.
Yes, and that's fine with me if he asks, okay?
Thank you. Now, I, I understand you may not be able to answer that, because you're, you represent the city and not the commission.
I'm just waiting for the question.
The question is, how would you recommend next time we are able to make a decision in this meeting? Do, do you have any particular language that you'd like us to use other than making a decision?
I'm going to direct our city council to not respond to your question.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Director Laird, it sounds like we won't be talking with the council anymore. Well, this is so fun, this has been-
Yes.
So, I, I think this is, this is getting into the ridiculous land right now. Let's be clear about this, we are here to make a decision, and let's focus on that, and if there is something that they have not put on the agenda, they need to understand that now they have made a mistake, correct it next time for the next commission.
Yeah.
Not for this commission.
Yeah.
And if they are thinking that, no, they are very intelligent about it, let's, let's look at that intelligence for the next time. For this time, let's go with the agenda, let's go back and finish this work.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't think that now this needs to get into the place where we always go back and say, there is a, there is a line here, there is a word here, there is something here, there is a full stop here, there is a comma here, and guess what? That has been done for the last two months. There is no full stop, there is no comma, there is no sentence there, there is no documentation here, we have gone through this. And this is the, this is definitely is what we don't want to happen at this point of time, let's make a clear decision. And I think, you know, the, the proposals that are there, let's discuss about the proposals rather than saying-
Yeah.
What is this agenda about? If that agenda needs to be amended, let's vote on the agenda to be amended, take a vote on it, and move on.
If I can give one follow-up, so I personally now feel uncomfortable in us making a final decision today. I would love it if we could all come to a consensus, and a future meeting we'll have one single bullet point on it, where we all come and we vote on whatever our consensus is during the beating.
All right, let's go for that.
Does that sound good?
I think we have enough time to make a decision. I don't think that now there is, we have discussed a proposal, if there's any other additional proposal that are there.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that your idea is great here, trying to come up with a consensus right now, but I do think we run into legal issues if we make a decision tonight, based on what council has told us, and so I think it's against our best interests to make a decision tonight, even if that's what a lot of members would really love to do.
Well, but we can decide what-
Right, we can-
We'll do it the next-
Come to consensus and then make a decision later.
Yes.
A formal decision.
Yes.
But, yes.
Okay. Was that Matt?
Did Fernando make a motion to, to schedule a meeting where we explicitly put on the agenda?
Well, the 8th of June is already scheduled.
That's, that's a great idea. That's a great idea, Matt. Maybe we should talk about that first, just to see when we meet.
Well, the 8th of, 8th of June has been announced. All the stuff has gone out for that one.
I would rather...
I'd be happy to meet sooner.
Schedule a meeting for Monday. Let's meet Monday.
Sure.
I think, you know, that makes more sense at this point.
Yeah.
If there is, if there is, if that thing has to be put on the agenda, let's actually go back and bring the proposal together. Let's have an agreement on the proposal.
Yeah.
Let's vote on that thing. And if you want to re-vote on that one, come back officially, put it on the agenda, and re-vote on that. On that day, it'll be a single point, line, one line item.
Yeah, yep.
Walk in there, and then say yes to it, and move on.
Okay.
I think what Matt is saying now is that to avoid some of the issues that we've had with actually scheduling our meetings, given our interactions with the city...
Yes.
It might be appropriate for us right now, well, we've got a public meeting in a quorum to decide, hey, let's meet on a particular day and time. So maybe we should just all go around and decide what that day and time is going to be briefly, and then we'll go back to discussion. Does that make sense?
Right.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a comment. We have staff that's available to come on June 8th. They're scheduled to do that. This is a special time for staff, and so it...
Point of order, Madam Chair. The staff, staff were not recognized. Did you recognize them?
I did.
Okay, my apologies.
So yes, Catherine?
So I'm just saying that we for sure have staff scheduled to be here on June 8th.
Which staff you have scheduled?
To do, to run all of the AV equipment.
We're going to be meeting in here again?
Yes.
To, to be clear, that was staff's decision, not ours.
Yes, not ours.
We're happy to meet wherever's convenient for staff. And...
Staff can make the decision where we're going to meet.
You're welcome to. You're welcome to. And we're happy to meet here. But I don't want anyone to think that we're forcing you to do this, Director Laird. And just to be clear. I mean, I love seeing all your faces. It's great. But, yeah.
Well, let's go with June 8th.
I would make a motion to do it sooner. I think Matt has also suggested Monday. Our other commissioners...
Yeah, I want to, I want to get this done. I, I'm going to be honest here in that, like, I, while I understand what, what Catherine is saying, like, I think at this point, we don't need a ton of staffing. And, I mean, we can, you know, we, Fernando brought most of the data himself. I brought most of the data myself. I'm sure we can figure out how to run a team meeting if we need to. I think, like, we can just make a motion to, you know, I think Monday works, you know, like a 45 minutes to an hour meeting. Like, do folks want to meet at this time, or do folks want to meet later in the evening? Or earlier in the evening?
Okay.
I think Monday was proposed. Does that not work for anybody? Monday at like 7:00 maybe?
Is there a second for Matt's proposal?
I would second that, but I would rather just ask, see if anybody has, I don't want to exclude any members. If Monday doesn't work, I'd rather know that now.
It doesn't. Can you make Monday? Kara?
I think I'm available Monday. I mean, I am concerned that there might be some issues, unintended consequences to staff. But I do believe I'm available Monday.
You need to understand, this is a city, city must staff this. You can't just meet without the city staff. We cannot meet on a Monday.
We met with just the two of you up until tonight.
Correct. But we, but we scheduled the dates, the times. The days have been on Thursday. We cannot do it on a Tuesday because of council meetings. And we do not do public meetings on Mondays or Wednesdays. So it's a Thursday.
Why is that? Is that a law? I apologize for maybe singing a little confrontational here, but this would not have been an issue if we were allowed to have our regularly scheduled meetings. So I'm trying to just get to the bottom of, is this an actual, like, thing that prevents us from meeting?
I've already told you, Fernando, excuse me, but it's going to be on a Thursday. It's the only day that we can staff it. And to have the meeting, it has to be on a Thursday. We have to staff it.
So are you saying that the, that the commission doesn't have the legal authority to call its own meeting?
You can call your own meeting. I'm going to actually answer that question.
Counsel?
Pardon me. The OPMA, the Open Public Meetings Act, has provisions for the chair or a majority of the members to call a special meeting. I believe Commissioner Corey has previously spoken to that section. That said, there are requirements under the OPMA for maintaining, taking of minutes. The city does make available this hybrid format so people can hear and, and/or participate. If you have public comment electronically, that has to be staffed. The building has to be staffed. And I believe that, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I believe that is what Director Laird is talking about. And many of those staff typically are subject to wage and hour limitations. And so the city can't regularly just direct people to staff meetings in the evening at, at any point without there being adverse financial consequences.
How does Thursday sound? Does that, is that something we could do?
I want to know is, why don't we know who all these people are that called in?
There was no way, so as someone who calls in, there was no way to sign in and say who you, who you are. Like, that's why I was just emailing every, like, that's why I was emailing and texting, like, I'm on the line, please let me in. Like, there's, there's no way to identify who is who on the public comment line. Like, yeah. I want to amend my motion then. I would like to motion that we meet next Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Second.
And, oh, let me, let me, I'd like to motion that we meet next Thursday at 6:00 PM, and explicitly...
I need to interrupt. Excuse me.
Can I, can I finish my motion, please, Madam Chair?
Let him finish his motion, please, okay? Yes?
And explicitly state that a Zoom op, or not Zoom, but a team's option is available for commissioners, and that the agenda state potential vote for final proposal.
Just vote, Matt, just...
Just vote, just vote.
Vote on final proposal, yeah. Let's remove any ambiguity.
Okay. Catherine?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Next week actually is a very difficult week because several staff members are on vacation. And so we will not be able to staff next Thursday.
So are you and Mary going to be here?
No, I'm on vacation.
Okay, all right.
Is, is Mary able to staff it on her own?
Mary is not able to staff it alone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there, is there any other member in Redmond who can be stepping up into the HR chair, HR seat here, and then conduct the meetings? Or is it just that, no, we have such lean staff here?
Could any other staff member run the meeting, Director?
No other staff member can run it, since I have been a part of these meetings the entire time.
So what about June 1st, which is a Thursday?
That works for our calendar.
Okay, great. So let's plan a meeting...
Do we want to get a formal proposal on that with the actual language to make sure we're...
Okay.
Good here?
Yes, Chandra?
We had one proposal that we discussed. Is there any other, you want to ask, is there any other additional proposals?
Are there any other additional ones? I have one.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to propose that we meet on June 1st.
No, I'm talking about the financial model.
Oh.
It's not the dates, right?
Oh, I think...
The dates part.
Well, we, we all get to that after we set the date for the next meeting.
Matt, are you okay with June 1st?
June, Matt, is that okay with you?
Thursday, I think.
Oh, let me check real quick. Yeah, that actually works better for me.
Kara?
I don't have my calendar in front of me at the moment, but to the best of my knowledge, I'm available on June 1st. If, really quickly, counsel, do you know if we can make this decision, since it's not on the agenda technically?
Commissioner raises a good point.
Can we meet right after this meeting and send an email to the city saying we'd like to meet June 1st? Not to discuss business, but to discuss scheduling another meeting? Would counsel be able to give us a suggestion on that particular question? If you want to ask Catherine, go ahead. Fine.
No, I don't need to discuss with Ms. Laird. You're talking about discussing amongst, just amongst yourself, a date?
A date.
The...
We just want to, like...
We respect your position here. We apologize for the stress we're putting you under, but we would like to meet.
It's not stress. I understand the request. I was waiting for Commissioner Cantor to...
Okay, so...
No, I, I meant to meet myself. I, I'm sorry.
Do you have something to say, Matt?
No, I, I, I...
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
So here's my confusion, is that if we have the authority to email and request meetings and get those meetings scheduled, I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to pass a motion right now to schedule a meeting to vote.
Well, we need to have at least Catherine and Mary here, so that was part of it.
No, I understand that. But it's like, they're going to be here on the 1st. I don't understand why we can't schedule...
On the 1st. I don't either, so...
I will just, I can just send an email after this.
Okay.
It appears staff have said that sounds like a good day. So let's save some time. I'll send an email, cc everyone who's relevant. I'll add an agenda item that I would appreciate if the city would allow me to discuss with the city attorney to make clear that it's a correct agenda item. But it's city's counsel, so I don't know if that'll be possible, but that would be great.
We'll find someone.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, Chair, I'm surprised that, no, we should take a legal opinion on an agenda item. I'm, I'm appalled that, no, that, no, we did not know this thing earlier. Neither this was brought up to us, saying that, no, we need to have a legal opinion on the agenda, how to put your own item on the agenda. Surprised, but I think, you know, it's just to be surprised. There are so many surprises in this. One more surprise, why not we take it? But at least come back and say that, no, there are no more surprises. At least give some clarity to this thing, because tomorrow I don't want anything to say, I didn't put a full stop here, or a comma here, doesn't work at all. It's absolutely ridiculous.
And my understanding is that the problem is that since this is a special meeting, we have to have warned the audience and anyone who's interested about exactly what we're planning to do.
We've done that. We've done that for every special meeting we've asked for.
And I think that the problem in part is that if we don't have certain things on, it can be misinterpreted and then is legally challengeable. And so we're just dotting our Ts, crossing our Is. Or, sorry, the exact opposite of that. But you know what I mean.
So to resolve this point, I think I will send everyone an email after this. It sounds like counsel is nodding his head at me, saying that that might be appropriate for the pure purpose of scheduling a meeting with an agenda that I will write, hopefully with counsel's help.
So you're going, you're going...
I will send us an email after this meeting. Yep. We will not do it during this meeting. And now we can just talk about the proposals.
Okay.
Discuss, consider, no action.
Madam Chair, can I ask a clarifying question? Is this meeting a regular commission meeting, or is it a special meeting?
The, the one on June 1st?
Yes.
It would be a regular.
Would counsel like to clarify if there's any different requirements between those that we should keep in mind?
The...
Between regular and special meetings?
Yes, the requirements for notice are those that Commissioner Corey, for a special meeting, are those that you, we've previously talked about, including the specificity of the agenda.
Okay, so we can amend the agenda if we hold...
Does a special meeting have to be held here, in council chambers?
I don't think...
Okay, so a special, okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, what did you, what was your question?
My question was, does, is June 1st going to be a special meeting or not?
Oh, you need to let me know that.
I think that would be up to what I write in the email.
Okay, then we could be a regular meeting.
I promise after this meeting is concluded, I'll try and ask counsel some questions and send the right email. I'll do my best, folks.
Well, we can work together on that.
Yeah, let's, let's try.
Okay.
Let's go back to discussion?
Just a point of clarification, Madam Chair. A regular meeting in OPMA parlance refers to one that is on a schedule that's been adopted by the governing body as the days on which they were...
Well, we haven't adopted one, so we'd like to adopt one tonight.
I see the irony now. Okay. This is wonderful. So it probably will be a special meeting, is what you're saying, because...
That's what it sounds like. And there is the, the method for a majority to request in writing. Councilmember Corey is, I think, proposing to utilize that method.
I'll work with the chair, yeah. It's, yeah.
Which is workable.
Okay.
All right.
Another detail, we're...
June, June 1st. But we're not, we're not proposing it now. I will write an email later that proposes it.
We're, I beg your pardon, I didn't hear that.
June 1st. We're not proposing it now, but it sounds like, the staff has indicated that should work. 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM? Is there anything that's more convenient for members when I send the email? I'd rather it just be public, so that I have as much public info as I can. I'm going to do 7:00 PM if nobody actually cares. So, okay, cool. Could we go back to talking about proposals, or?
Sure. I think we should talk proposals. So I'll tell you what my proposal was. So my proposal was that we should pay staff, or pay counsel for half-time. So that would be 10, 10:40 in hours, times whatever the prevailing wage or the, that we have. I actually was planning to pay more than that, because I wanted to pay like $5,000 a month. And that would be $60,000 a year. Yes, but it comes out to 57, 640, 720, with taking the living wage. Okay? Okay, so comments from anybody?
I was going to first of all say, I think one thing we can all agree on is a cost-of-living adjustment each year. So I think we can all agree on that. I was also going to point out that we've been going for about a little over an hour. It might be time for a break soon. So...
Yes. Thank you for that reminder.
I, I also want to make a proposal, but I do think we can end soon. I wanted to just put 6,500 on the table as like a middle point between Karen's proposal and Fernando's proposal. I was originally thinking of 3,500. I don't think that should be on the table now. But I think 6,500 as a compromise, where we are getting that number to test, like, paying people what, what, what they're worth. But it's not, it's not as big. But I, I just want to kind of put that number out there and, and have the vote on the 1st.
Well, we're not doing the 1st. Is that right? Or are we...
I think we will. We aren't right now, but I'll send an email and propose it.
There are three proposals on the table. Does anyone, Hoffman, do you have anything you want to propose?
Yeah, I would like to put forward for consideration, using the only other elected official's salary that is a living wage as sort of a reference point for this. Not suggesting that we pay counsel the same as, as the mayor, but maybe something, a percentage of that, you know, commensurate with, with the duties that they perform and the hours that they work. Not defining what hours they work, but the reality of the situation and what work they do today and in the future. So, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to put that forward for consideration and then discussion.
Okay.
So, questions on that one? So for, for all practical purposes, you're saying that, no, we have all the elected officials, they should treat all of the elected officials on the same plane. That's what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So the mayor and then the city council should be treated as all elected officials being on the same level. That's what, that's what I heard.
Not on the same pay scale.
Not on the same, yeah. I, I would say that, I believe that we should treat them as on the same level in the sense that they're elected officials, each with reserved powers, separate reserved powers. Some are reserved for the mayor, others are reserved for the council. I believe it's in the best interest of the city to have... I believe it's in the best interest of the city to have some parity there. The current dichotomy between what the mayor is making and what council is making is absurd. And I believe that they should be at some comparable level, you know, commensurate to the duties they perform. They are representatives of the people. They're elected officials. They're expected to represent the people of Redmond. And frankly, their compensation should reflect that.
Okay. Matt, do you have any comments?
Matt, do you have any comments? Is that what you said?
Yes.
I don't know if you've spoken to Mike. Matt, they're asking if you have any comments.
I don't have, I don't have any comments. I think this is all great stuff to consider. And I'm not motioning to adjourn, but I'm open to it if everyone's gotten a chance for input.
Okay. So Fernando, do you have what you want to say?
I mean, I will just, you know, kind of put out there that it sounds like, at least before, we did have some potential, you know, more weight towards the 115 number that I proposed. I want to make sure that we're comfortable with whatever number we select, and I prefer us all to have a consensus around it. I will echo, I think, some things that have already been said by a few other people, where multiple of the models that we're proposing, I think, will get us, you know, close to my number. And I'm not tied to my number concretely, but I think that, you know, Othman's suggestion of looking at mayor's salary and then doing some sort of math on it to say, you know, given the surveys that were given by council and the amount of hours and time that goes into those roles, it's, you know, it's at least like a third or a three-quarter time job, it sounded like to me. So doing math there, I'd be comfortable with. Yeah, I mean, do we want to take a break, or do we want to adjourn? I don't, I think Matt said adjourn, but...
Let's take a 15-minute break.
You hear that, Matt?
Is there, we want to talk about though?
We'll come back and talk about.
Matt might be tired.
Yes, Catherine?
Well, 15 minutes is usually not how long we would take breaks, because you do have the public that could be listening in, so my recommendation would be a five-minute break.
Five-minute, okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
Sounds great. Acclimation, let's call it a break.
Okay. So, we've been, I was approached while we were on break by the interim finance director to give her five minutes to talk about the impact on the city. So, please.
If I can just ask counsel, if we amend the agenda to add the finance director to the agenda, is that a legal liability? Because I believe our chair is proposing we perhaps, I would love to hear from the finance director.
Your mic's not on.
I'm sorry if that is the case, but I'd like counsel to advise us to that.
I wasn't hearing a proposal to amend the agenda you're talking about, the proposals that have been being discussed.
Okay, great.
I was approached by the interim finance director who would like five minutes to address us, and I said that was okay, but is it really?
If it's within the scope of the proposals that are on your agenda and that the commission has been discussing, then yes.
Would you say it is? Would you say it's within the scope?
I don't know what.
Yeah, it's one sentence, I mean, I'm just.
I don't know what the interim finance director is going to say.
So if it's not in the scope, will you stop her?
I will waive.
Okay. Chandra.
So, are we amending the agenda on the fly?
No, I'm not.
I'm not either.
Okay, we better not do that.
We can't.
We better not do that thing. And then, you know, because if it is convenient, we bring it in, if it is not convenient, we kick it out. That's not the way we'd work. I don't think that's the right way to do it, too. And if you think that that's what it is going to be, you better take a vote. And if the vote says that, no, yes, we are going to do that.
Yes, counsel, if you want to weigh in.
I mean, I would propose that we just, given the existing kind of complications, that we would humbly request that the finance director forgive us and email us any information for us to review before the next meeting. That would be my proposal, given my discomfort with kind of the legal, I mean, I prefer not to have it today if it's a separate, but I mean.
Counsel, I'm asking for your.
Right, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear the end of that. I was going to suggest if there's, if the commission has concerns, you could add it to the items that you want to include in the call for a special meeting on June 1. And that may be what you just said.
I don't want to do it then.
Can I also like?
Yes, Matt, please offer your comments.
I would rather that the comment be in writing than spoken. I think like, we are getting mired in a lot of like, if so, and then, and if so's. So like, it might be helpful for us to just get it in writing, add data from staff, and then like, consider it when we come to vote in our next meeting.
Okay. All in favor of getting the comment in writing affirmed? Okay, so it's unanimous, we will pass. So, we'll ask that you please submit your comments in writing to us.
And just a point of clarification, is it possible to get that before, like, sooner rather than later? Because I know sometimes we've received things day of, and sometimes I don't have time after work to check my emails, so if we could get it earlier rather than later, that would be amazing.
By Monday, that sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, I've also noticed that some of these comments came in in April, and we did not receive them, which would have been nice if we had, and could have been up to date on these. So, I would like to ask staff that could we make sure that the comments are coming as they're received and in a timely manner?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Chandra?
I had a follow-up on that, I guess, or go ahead, sorry, Chandra.
Okay, I think, you know, the HR was able to send a controversial comment as one of those things, but there were so many other.
By the way, yes.
There were so many comments sitting there, and they didn't think that, no, those were relevant. And the one controversial comment, which was supposed to be like, you know, literally scorching the whole thing, that was the one which was sent out by the HR. I can't understand why that was to be bubbled up as an important thing versus something support that was there, for that was never, it was negated. I'm surprised that, you know, they should have an answer, I'm pretty sure that, no, they have it again. Thank you.
Yes, Catherine, do you want to?
I can speak to that. That email had been, was intended to go to the city council and to the salary commission, so the address that was used said Redmond Salary Commission, and the person did not recognize or realize that that email did not go to the salary commission members. So that, that's why that one was sent, and that is primarily because it had also been sent to the council.
But all of these are to the Redmond Salary Commission?
Yeah.
And they did not come to us?
It's clearly listed so many comments came through, I'm sorry, it was clearly listed so many comments came through to the salary commission. That was the only comment, which was absolutely negative, which had to really scorch us hard. And that was the comment which came through and said that, no, look at this one, look at what's happening there. I'm surprised that, no, there is some method to the madness there. When we get these comments last minute to read them, it's tough to read them. But again, these were available almost a month back. I wish I could have seen those things earlier. I wish I could have commented on those things. I wish I could have deliberated on those things. If there was some intelligent comment on that one, I wish I could have seen that thing earlier.
Okay, yep.
Thank you, Chair.
And Chandra, I fill you on that. At the same time, I want to point out that it is already 8:37.
Okay.
And we're supposed to end at 9:00.
Okay. So we. Othman, you want to speak? Okay, please.
Yeah, you know, to further some of the discussion around the idea or slash proposal that I had floated earlier, I would like to hear the commission, the commission's opinions on potentially setting the council member salaries to 60% of the mayor's salary.
Okay, thank you. Chair.
Yes, Chandra.
So, I would request the staff to let us know what the mayor's current salary is. Now that there's a proposal on the table to be able to peg that, the formula to the mayor's salary, I would request the staff to be able to present us the current salary or the updated salary that is there, that will help us to make a quick decision on that.
The mayor makes, what, 147 now?
So the mayor makes 145,000 currently. The council has proposed to increase the salary to 170,000. It has not been approved by council.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up there? So, our purview is that we only set the salary. Does that have to be a specific number, as i.e. you are, the salary is X? Or can we set the salary to a percentage of the mayor's salary? So if the mayor's raise goes through, you know, it raises everyone's salary?
Just to comment on that, we might want to avoid, first, I don't even know if we can do that, but second, we might just want to avoid that, because it would give a very weird incentive for the council to raise the mayor's salary.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think if we're going to do that, we should just consider, okay, you know, for our commission, we decide whatever percentage we decide, and say that, okay, the mayor sounds like is going to make 170. For our deliberations, the formula we're using is 170 times whatever, so.
Point six.
Othman?
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think that's sort of what I meant, using that as the basis for it, maybe not entirely setting the council member's salary as a formula, but using that calculation as the basis for our decision.
Well, thank you. Okay, Chandra?
Want a quick comment on that one? So, just as we were talking earlier, there are eight elected members. We want to just ensure that, no, those elected members get the parity equity. That's all that we are looking at. It's not about comparison of the bulk number there, but to be able to say that, no, looking at what, we treat all of our elected members on par with the city, in the city government, that's all we care.
Just really quickly, I did the math. If we paid them 60% of the mayor's proposed salary, which is 170, that would be 8,500 a month.
Okay.
Which is pretty close to Fernando's number.
Yep, and mine, and all the rest, so, okay.
Just to clarify, as I recall, the mayor's duties are substantially more than the council's duties. Can HR confirm that that's true?
Yes, that's true.
Based on that, I'm not sure that it quite makes sense to compare them as directly to the mayor, though I think it's a really interesting idea.
So if I can maybe.
Sure, I'm not really on that one, yes?
Yeah, I guess just to respond to that, I mean, I think it, you know, makes sense the mayor would do more work than each individual council member, but I think the proposal, at least as I understood it, was trying to take that into account, not saying we're going to pay the mayor's salary to every council member, but just say, they're on equivalent public office. The mayor works, you know, in our mind, it's treated as full-time by staff and HR. Council, given the surveys and the data that we have, the surveys that I saw put it somewhere between like 60 and 75% is my best quick math. So if we wanted to do that, that would be like what, .65 or .7 times 170, I could get a calculator, but I think that's, I don't know if that's the proposal, but that would be one way to do it, I don't know.
I'd have to see the numbers in front of me, unfortunately, hearing them sometimes just goes through one ear and out the other.
Yeah, let me run the math.
I definitely think that it's worth thinking through, if they're doing substantially less and having part-time, how does that impact this number?
I mean, my idea there would just be to say, how much, like, what percentage of the mayor's position do we think it's approximately equivalent to? Do they work 10% as much as the mayor? Do we want them to be active and work 70% as much? Like, I don't know.
Chandra?
Oh, thank you, Chair. So, I think discussing with the, you know, the council president, Jessica Forsite, and then also the council vice president, when she came, it was pretty self-evident that they do similar functions. It's a joint group makes a lot of decisions for the city. Yes, it looks like, you know, they are working at different levels because of the executive functions that are there, that's a little different storyline, but again, you know, but when they take decisions based on information that's available, and I think, you know, they make, you know, as a group decision kind of stuff. That said, right, so these guys should be on parity, that's a great idea, I love that idea.
Okay, so we've got three proposals on the table. Are we fine with finalizing those, and we can write them up and come to a decision at our next meeting?
Can we repeat what the three proposals are?
Okay, yes.
I can repeat mine. Mine was the 2080 times, excuse me, let me pull up the actual numbers in a second, but it's the MIT living wage calculators, or living wage for a single parent with two children, multiplying that by 2080 was my number. I think, I can grab the specific number, I think it was 115, 2 something, but I'll grab it right now. It's the same number as I proposed before.
Okay, yeah, I wrote those down. So, mine, my proposal was.
Chair, one quick point of information.
Yes.
Is the city taking notes on the proposals?
Okay.
So you line itemize those proposals, saying proposal one, proposal two, proposal three, proposal one by Cory, proposal one by, you know, the chair. Will you go back and itemize that one, please?
Okay, thank you. So mine was that, I didn't work off any of that, so if I just came up with the thing of that, I thought $60,000 a year would be a good number to offer, so that people could take this on as another job. But it wasn't expected to support them totally. So I set 60,000, which is 5,000 more a month. Okay. And Matt, yours is?
6,500 a month.
Okay. So those are our three proposals. Othman took.
That's a total different proposal, right? Go ahead.
Yeah, my proposal would be based off of the mayor's proposed salary, which was 170,000.
That will be in January, that's not now.
To clarify this, our decision.
Take effect, too.
So can we, I have a question, can we ask that the council's salary become effective, like, July 1st?
I think it's 30 days from when we make our decision, unless there's, yeah, 30 days from when we make our decision, I think, I think council's here, so.
Council has already made the decision that it will be effective June, January 1st of 2024.
But I thought we could.
I don't think that's, we can't pick a date.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the mayor's salary.
No, no, sorry, not the mayor, we're talking about council salary.
No, we're talking about the council's salary.
Yeah, and I think that's 30 days from when we make our decision and hand it over to the city clerk, assuming.
Is that correct, counsel? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Just to get that on the record, no sooner than 30 days after the decision has been made, and we can choose the date.
Yes. All right.
So, is the, I just want to double-check on that, because the ordinance that we were given on day one, I assume was amended then, because it says, quote, "shall become effective as to the covered positions 30 days after the schedule is filed with the city clerk." That's, there's another, so.
And it'll be, when will it be filed with the city clerk?
Well, we can file it whenever we want, when we're done.
Okay, so we can file it whenever we, are we going to file it? Doesn't staff have to?
Maybe counsel can answer how we file something, but I assumed we would just email the city clerk.
How about we make sure we know what that process is by the next meeting?
That's great. So.
And if I could step in for just one moment? If the finance director is taking notes on this, or can reference the notes of our staff, so that you know exactly what proposals we're thinking about, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Yep. Very, very, yes, thank you, that's a good call. Okay, so are we.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we did not get Othman's proposal, we're not clear what his proposal is.
Okay, so Othman, would you please repeat your proposal?
So, based on what we just heard, given that the mayor's salary, proposed salary would not go into effect until the beginning of next year, I would like to get the commission's input on whether we'd be more comfortable using the 145K number or the 170K number as the basis.
I have a question to ask, if we do this and peg it to the mayor's salary, can it be whenever the mayor gets a raise, the council would get a raise?
I think we don't want to do that. That's, that's the awkward conflict of interest thing, and I also, I don't even know if we can, but.
Othman, do you want to just put, and we can figure out the logistics later, a proposal of both numbers, so like 60% of 145 and 60% of 170, so that way, like, staff finances more data for us to go on? Just so it's two different proposals?
I think the bigger issue is that that is more of a methodology, it's not an issue, it's just we, like, I'm fine with the methodology, I think we just argue over what the percentage is, you know, like, I mean, we could talk about it now, maybe we're like, oh, yeah, I mean, given the surveys, we think it's 60, 70% or something, and then we multiply that by the mayor's salary, but.
Yes, Chandra?
So, I think, you know, not knowing the exact number that will be approved, you can actually take an average of those two, and come out with like, that's probably 157,500, right? Which is close to 160 again, not much of a difference, but 157,500. And then, based on that, as you were mentioning about, from the conversations that we had with the two participants from the city council who gave input, that's the one number that we have to decide, saying that, is it going to be .5 or .6 multiplied by .5 or .6, right? Looks like, you know, obviously the numbers are at .6 from the data that we have, it looks like it's about .6. So if you take that .6 thing, probably you may want to go back and give the staff that it is going to be an average of those two numbers, multiply it with the .6, then we can discuss on that the exact number, but I think, you know, that could be the number, or you can go back and again, give that number later, after we go, you can send it as a proposal.
Point, Catherine, my understanding is that that's only proposed for the mayor, that hasn't been fully approved by the entire council?
That's correct, it has not been approved by council.
And when will it be approved by council?
We, I believe it's June 20th.
Okay.
Given that, given that council has discussed it, and I think they proposed that in a meeting with a majority of the body, it seems pretty likely that would be approved.
I heard it on their study session.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And that was not the full council, so yes, Chandra?
So, I think, having to hear that one, right, I think, you know, we can take the average of the thing and go with it. I think that will be a good number, that'll be a number which probably will be much more tangible.
But we're not paying them 157,000 dollars a year, correct?
No, 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 we are going to take this number.
Yes.
Multiply with.
You should talk into your mic so that Matt can hear.
I wish, I wish, that's not what, I wish like, you know, we had 2 billion dollars and we could talk about.
No, no, I just meant, I meant.
At this point, I don't think that, no, we have 2 billion dollars in the city.
Tell me the final number.
So this is like 157.
Yes.
Into .6.
Okay.
94,500.
Okay.
Divided by 12.
That's a lot.
No, no, divided by, that is 7,800.
Okay, so, okay.
7,800.
All right.
Yeah.
Good.
Just giving the chair the exact.
Let's get the big numbers off the conversation, since we've been misquoted.
The number that you want to quote is 7, 7875.
What percentage is that?
.6.
.6.
24 hours.
Okay.
Per week.
My math is the same.
The same thing?
Yeah, got it.
Great, I think you can probably go back and give it to the staff, so they'll put it in the proposal.
Okay, so if you could just clarify what the number is, is it going to be a percentage of the mayor's salary, or is it going to be a flat rate?
Well, let's, let's, let's not, let's just.
One of the proposals.
I know, but I'm not.
I think it's, we're just, we're going to propose a number.
Yeah, my.
We can't do the percentage, and we don't want to make it, it's calculated that way.
My proposal is 7,825? 75, 7,875 a month.
Per month, right?
Per month.
Okay, I'm sorry, one more time, what's that number?
7,875 a month.
Okay. Yes, counsel? Yes?
Madam Chair, but it might be helpful if you're still able to recognize, and we're trying to get the numbers down, and multiple people are speaking at the same time, and it's hard to get it.
I want everyone to be clear about what the numbers are. So, someone want to, are we ready to adjourn?
And the only other thing I could think of is if.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I just confirm the proposals, just to make sure I have them correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mary, make sure you've got them written down right. So, Karen, your proposal is $5,000 a month. Matt's proposal is $6,500 a month. Othman's proposal is 7,875 per month.
And?
And Fernando, you're at 9,608 per month.
If you want to round up the dollar, sounds great, yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay. All right. So.
Do we, do we write now, just to save ourselves time, in the next meeting, just want to see what kind of consensus we would have for each of those proposals, so that we can make our next meeting more efficient, just really quickly going around and saying which ones we might vote for at a future meeting? Just to save ourselves some time.
We could. So, proposal one is Fernando's.
So this is not a vote, it's just a consensus poll?
Just how do you like it? How do you feel about it?
Yes.
Yes.
Like thumbs up, thumbs down.
I feel great about it.
You what? You feel great, okay.
Feel great about it.
Matt feels great.
I'm okay with it.
I'm concerned about it, it feels a little high to me, and especially where we don't know the financial implications yet, I'm a little nervous about that number.
Okay. And Fernando, I also have concerns about that number, so.
I think I'm good with that number, too.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
And then we have my proposal, which is $5,000 a month. That's not an increase of $5,000, that's just the pay would be $5,000. Okay, so, Fernando?
I would, if we voted on all the other proposals first, I think I would vote for it, but only if we voted on the other proposals first, and see if we got consensus on one of those.
Okay, Othman?
In the event we were unable to get consensus, I would support it, but my personal opinion is that it's a bit low, I think.
Okay.
And I'm more comfortable with that one.
Okay. Matt?
I, I feel the same as Fernando and Othman.
Okay. And Chandra?
I think I will not vote for that.
Okay. I would. And then we have Matt's proposal, and.
Do we want to restate that one, just so we're all clear?
Can you restate that one, Matt?
6,500 a month, and I'll say that I believe that with the agenda, we should vote for all these proposals with the highest one first. But, you know, I think it's a good number, but I also think that, I mean, we should vote for the highest proposal first, and I think that, like, we'll see what happens, but I would vote for this.
Okay. And Kara?
Yeah, I'm more comfortable with this one, too.
Okay. So, anything else for the good of the order?
We have Othman's, did we, do Othman's?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like some consideration for my proposal, 7,875 a month, a bit lower than Fernando's proposal. If we're taking, you know, average rent in Redmond, for instance, hovers somewhere between like 2,000 to 2,500, you know, for a two-bedroom apartment, that would constitute about 30% of their gross income at 7,875.
But this, this isn't, okay, let me reiterate, this is not a full-time job, that's what we're considering, so.
Correct, but with the understanding that one of the requirements for to be a city councillor is that you have to reside in the city of Redmond.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
And I think there's also some debate as to what the responsibilities, you know, constitute in, but, yeah.
I, I understand.
And honestly, you know, after I pay my rent, I like to make sure that I have money for groceries, too.
I agree on that one. I think, you know, if you line itemize it, it'll come to the top three proposals, pretty much, if you line itemize it. I know, the top three, I'm saying the top three, right? The fourth one is absolutely low, you know, it gives us no sense of closure for any practical purposes.
Yeah.
So, this is being done after many, 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 you know, years and decades, let's get this thing right.
All right.
Did we want to, did we actually do the up-down on Othman's proposal? I don't think we did. Did we? Maybe I.
I would like, I would like to hear feedback, yeah.
Do you do up-down on the proposals?
Yeah, just, just Othman's, because I think we missed that one, we didn't hear what the consensus would be around that.
All right. So those in favor?
I would.
Othman's, yes?
You're not taking a vote?
No, this is not a vote, to be clear.
We're just.
We're just, we're just trying to understand better where the current positions of the commissioners are. We are considering the proposals, don't worry. If there's anything you want to tell us to do differently.
I like my proposal, I would vote for it.
I also like Othman's proposal, if mine does not pass, I will. If, if mine does not pass, I will vote for Othman's.
That's great.
James, these?
Okay.
And I'd want a little more time to think about it, but it's one that I want to think about, and again, see the financial repercussions, because I find that to be pretty important, too.
Yep.
I'll vote for that.
Okay.
If the top one doesn't go through, I'll vote for that.
The top one. They're all the top one. I, I, I would have to really think about it, and I'd have to hear from the Finance[1686.47]